The time has come. The time has come for our July 17, 2017, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Balco.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Thank you. If we can ask Dr. Harris from First United Methodist Church to lead us in prayer. All stand please.
Let us pray. Creator, Redeemer, Sustainer, grant your grace, wisdom, and discernment of every next step to those called to lead in the office of City Council. Provide holy boldness and clearness of thought in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you all already know, our area was hit by a significant flooding. To that end, the American Red Cross has set up temporary housing at Thomas Jefferson Middle School for those displaced by the storm, and also they are offering meals. We are working with Red Cross to put out, to put a call out to donate cleaning supplies to assist in the cleanup efforts. If you would like to help, please drop these items off at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, which is located at 682 South Lewis Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. In addition, I would like to let Gurnee Mayor Christine Kevorek know that we in Waukegan are on standby should her community needs any resources or assistance. Lake County will be creating a damage assessment report that will determine our eligibility for state or federal assistance. We will provide more information in the coming days about the residents, about how residents can report uninsured damage to properties. Let me take a moment to recognize all of the city staff and citizens who went out, who went above and beyond to help our neighbors in their time of need. There were specifically two gentlemen, Alderman Newsome in your ward, on Pine Avenue, and Ridgeland. And before I was able to get there, they were just out there in their rakes and a bucket and just picking up things. Those two men, I know myself, you, and Alderman May was there. It was just amazing to see how just ordinary people can come out at a time of need. So I want to, I didn't get their names, but I do want to let everyone know that it was just, it was an awesome sight to see they're just helping out. To the McCaffrey family and the passing of their grandson Ian. Ian lost the battle with long-term illness last week. This little guy was such a fighter, and his light shined on so many people in his short life. Our hearts go out to his family and their difficult time. I would also ask that we keep in our prayers Mr. Chris Garland, who is a Public Works Foreman for the City of Waukegan Public Works Department. His mother passed last week, so as we send our condolences, please keep your, keep them in your prayers. Past events. Fourth of July fireworks. What an amazing night and a great display of our, of our patriotic spirit. Thank you to the city staff and to those enthusiastic spectators. What a great time, and I think we did a good job. And if, if you don't want to, I think I am, I want to give a good round of applause to those who are part of that. By the way, I lit the first, I don't know, I'm gonna call it a firecracker. They told me to walk away gently, but they didn't tell me was gonna go off so suddenly. So I was a little scared, but it's okay. They were there to help. Two weeks ago, Waukegan City Hall was a film location for Hollywood production for the upcoming film, The Pages. We look forward to this, this film release sometime next year, and we're proud to have been selected as a site for filming. Scoop, Waukegan, and Gospel on the Beach. Thank you to the countless visitors, volunteers, sponsors, and city staff for making these, these events run so smoothly. We look forward to next year's Scoop and Gospel on the Beach and a great, great, great job by the Waukegan Police Department. These guys did an awesome, awesome job of really making sure everyone enjoyed themselves while protecting and serving our community. Thank you, Chief, to you and your team. Upcoming events. Everyone should mark their calendars for Friday, July 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Waukegan's Beach for a national night out with our police department and also with Waukegan Park District Touch a Truck event. This event will, will have free admission, and will have food vendors, live music, family activities, K-9 demonstrations, a fire safety trailer, monster trucks, and much more. There will also be a fundraiser with a dunk tank including local celebrities, Alderman. Again, that's Friday, July 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Waukegan's Beach. Lastly, special recognition. A few weeks ago, there was a ribbon cutting. I want to make sure are they, is, are they here, Jane? All right. That one we're gonna have to hold off on. And here we go. I have a special announcement. The City of Waukegan will be issuing a request for proposal for a comprehensive land use plan in the coming weeks. As part of that process, we'll be establishing a volunteer steering committee to work with staff and consultants. For more information involved, I'd like to call up Ms. Noel Kishaliper for our planning department just to give a brief details on what they are.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
We are soliciting public participation in our steering committee for the comprehensive land use plan. Our public relations department, Jane, was kind enough to create a form on the front page of our website. So if you're interested in volunteering to participate in that committee, you can go to the city's website, fill out the form, and attach a resume or a bio to that. It is a volunteer committee, there's no pay involved. We expect the work will be done within a two-year timeframe, and the committee will be helping to select the consultant that we'll use for the process, as well as participating in the process while the planning is going on. So again, go to the city's website at www.waukeganil.gov. On the very front page, you'll see a link for the form for the steering committee for the comprehensive land use plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Noel. All right, next audience time.
We have Eileen Shanley Roberts. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham and council members. I'm Reverend Eileen Shanley Roberts, resident of the 4th Ward and co-chair of Clean Power Lake County Campaign, and I'm thrilled to attend tonight's City Council meeting. I am eagerly anticipating the council's vote on Mayor Cunningham's resolution to commit the city to the Paris Climate Agreement and the Compact of Mayors. Thank you for your leadership in introducing this, Mayor Cunningham. Clean Power Lake County and our partners commend you and members of the City Council for listening to us as constituents and making a commitment to take action on climate. After over four years of climate and environmental advocacy, Clean Power Lake County strongly encourages this body to adopt this resolution and begin taking action on this issue immediately. Thank you also to Alderman David Villalobos and Alderman Lisa May for their leadership in advocating publicly to secure clean air, clean water, and a healthy, clean energy economy in Waukegan. If we're going to rebrand Waukegan's image as a progressive leader in sustainability, we're going to need everyone. Clean Power Lake County and our partners look forward to working with you, Mayor Cunningham, and the City Council in developing this plan and encourage City Hall not to waste any time. We can begin a transparent public process right now for a strong and just climate action plan that works hand in hand with your goals to revitalize our lakefront. This is essential in any real climate plan for Waukegan and near-term action steps to secure a coal-to-clean energy plan for our community. We are so happy to see you taking action to exercise our home rule authority. Waukegan has tremendous power, and it's time for us to use it. Thank you for your initiative, your leadership, and we are looking, so looking forward to working with you in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'd like to second your remarks. That was so well done. Thank you. Mayor Cunningham, members of the City Council, you know me because I'm here all the time watching you, listening to you, supporting you, I hope. I'm coming tonight not to whine or complain, but to maybe share a concern with you, okay? We live at 2597 Club Home Lane. My husband and I have lived here 45 years this month, came to Waukegan when he was discharged from the Navy. We have been supportive, happy residents ever since then. Just so you know, for 18 years, about 18 years, I have poured a lot of myself into downtown revitalization here in Waukegan. I served on the Waukegan Main Street Board for 10 years, six of those as president. I served on the steering committee of the Waukegan Community Council for several years after the implementation, the presentation of our master plan. Was on the Waukegan Renaissance Commission as a commissioner for several years. Served on the Capitol Campaign Team that raised the funds to complete the Waukegan Art Space Loft project. So my time, my energy, which is waning as I get older, helped me here with, you know, let's get things going. My expertise, whatever there is of that, and my resources have been poured into this community for many years, and I love it here. My concern is with some of our buildings downtown. Two years ago, we lost the solder building, and we lost the solder building because it was not maintained. The owner didn't take care of it, and it became a hazard and had to be taken down. And as so many other buildings have come down and have left giant gaping holes in our streetscape. And I agree with the previous speaker that we are headed toward a great revitalization in so many ways, not just the Clean Power Initiative, but so many other ways that we as a community are moving forward. And I just want to encourage you to take seriously some of the buildings that I pass by all the time and that I am very worried about. The Waukegan Building on the corner of Washington and Genesee, the last time I was in there was about 10 years ago, and it was already deteriorating from the inside out, and I can't imagine it's gotten any better. The YMCA Building sits there, the Masonic Temple sits there. Academy Square, I am a little encouraged to see signage that they're offering some lease incentives for somebody to actually move in there. That building was built in 2004, it's 13 years old, except for a couple of offices, has never seen a tenant. So here's my sort of suggestion, question, whatever. As far as I'm concerned, there are two options for dealing with these kinds of issues. One is to incentivize building owners, and one is penalize them. Speaking quickly, incentivize or penalize.
Thank you, Ms. Diane.
If you can think of ways to do that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Daniela Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and members of City Council. My name is Julio Guzman. I'm a resident of the 5th Ward, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as a representative of the Sierra Club, founding partner of the Clean Power Lake County Campaign. As the Trump administration retreats from global leadership on climate, we are proud to have Waukegan join hundreds of other communities in stepping forward to lead in the global climate crisis, whose most devastating impacts will fall on my generation. But even last week, Waukegan and Lake County saw firsthand the disaster and stress from the local impacts of climate change on our community. Nearly all of us were impacted by the storm, which damaged our property and blocked our transportation routes. We know that climate change doesn't just mean more destructive hurricanes and rising seas for coastal cities. Right here in northeastern Illinois, it means more intensive rain events that cause flooding. It means steadily increasing temperatures that will worsen the air quality for our kids with respiratory illnesses. And it means extreme heat events that threaten our seniors and families who can't afford air conditioning. These impacts and the aftermath that we see from our recent flooding has a social and economic burden for private citizens and the City of Waukegan in general. Mayor Cunningham, the Sierra Club commends you in taking the great first step in addressing the effects that climate change has on our community by introducing a resolution that commits the city to the Paris Climate Agreement and the Compact of Mayors. Thank you for listening to your constituents, who, as you know, have organized on this issue for the last four years. Our campaign urges all the members of City Council to vote yes in adopting the resolution which will be introduced shortly. It is critical that City Hall quickly begin an inclusive process with community stakeholders to develop a strong and just climate action plan in Waukegan. Any meaningful plan on climate requires steps to bring about a responsible coal-to-clean energy transition process for Waukegan and address the largest point source of carbon emissions in our city and Lake County. While industrial pollution has defined much of our recent history, clean energy innovation and the environmental leadership that we're seeing here can define Waukegan moving forward. The Sierra Club and Clean Power Lake County Partners stand ready to work with City Hall in developing a bold plan that addresses our community's largest polluters, seizes the economic benefits of solar development and energy efficiency in the Future Energy Jobs Act, and builds a more sustainable, accessible transportation plan for our city. Once again, we commend and support this governing body's decision to commit Waukegan to the Paris Agreement and the Compact of Mayors. We look forward to working with you, Mayor Cunningham. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rhoady, and I live in the 3rd Ward. As you may know, I am the administrator of the Northern Illinois Chapter of the Bernycrats. Our group's goal is to encourage progressive-minded citizens to run for local office. We also create events where citizens can engage in the political process. The last time I spoke here, I appealed to the City Council to allow us to use these chambers. Unfortunately, our event did not meet the parameters set by the mayor's office. Still, I would like to thank the mayor for giving, giving us his time and consideration. Fortunately, we were able to find another venue, and I would like to use this time to bring attention to upcoming events. On Saturday, July 29th, at 2:00, we will be holding a roundtable with gubernatorial candidate Chicago Alderman Amea Puar at the Waukegan Public Library at 126 North County Street. At this event, Alderman Puar will outline his policies for what he refers to as the New Deal for Illinois. Also, on Sunday, August 6th, at 1:15, we will be hosting a question and answer session with gubernatorial candidate State Senator Daniel Biss at the Waukegan Public Library. Prior to this event, citizens can submit questions on topics ranging from the environment to pensions and taxation. The first half, we will cover the submitted questions, and time permitting, we will open the floor to questions by the attendees. I ask that if people would like to submit questions, they go to the Facebook page named Local Bernycrats Northern Illinois, find the event, and submit your questions. I'd also like to mention that both of these events will be broadcast on Facebook Live to serve as a reference for citizens who cannot attend. At this point, I would like to encourage the mayor and the City Council to attend these events. While it is still early in the process, this is a time where candidates' policies are most flexible and more likely to adopt projects that are important to municipalities. It is imperative to the success of Waukegan that, that when these candidates decide which policies and projects they want to adopt, that Waukegan is a town that they have in mind. It is our feeling that it is the duty of our local elected officials to let these candidates know what Waukegan expects of them. As far as citizens of Waukegan are concerned, if you care about social justice, environmental justice, economic justice, criminal justice, if you have concerns over pensions, taxation, and Illinois' place in the Union, then I ask you go to the Local Bernycrats of Northern Illinois Facebook page and RSVP to these events. The state of Illinois is in a precarious position, and we need a bold progressive plan for the future of Illinois, so it can be a place where people want to live. I cannot imagine any vision proposed by any candidate that does not have the needs of Waukegan as part of their plans. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Clyde McLamore. I'm the founder of Lake County Chapter of Black Lives Matter. I want to first say I attended the scoop, and I left my keys in my trunk of my car, and somebody rolled over and told the deputy chief, and the deputy chief called in the license plate number and got the keys and opened up my door and stuck anywhere I got my car in the purse that was in the trunk, didn't get stolen, you know? Just wanted to thank that, you know? We do have good people here in Waukegan. And the chief happened to walk down the street, say, "Ain't your neighbor Clyde?" I said, "Yeah." "Your keys was left in the trunk." And, just wanted to share that, you know? It was a good event. But on another note, as y'all know, yesterday, we had another shooting by the police in St. Paul, Minnesota. Australian lady came to this country to visit Mary, to get married, and thought she was, a predator was coming, and called the police, and the police came in and started shooting it, and unfortunately, you know, she died. You know, Black Lives Matter has 40 chapters in the United States. We being one, and it's a lot of work that we still have to do. We have some great police. We doing some reforms here in Waukegan, but in Lake County as a whole, no, we not. So we need, we had to do some work. So I'm asking you council members, the mayor, to attend next Monday, the Lake County Chapter of Black Lives Matter opening, it's an open meeting, Monday, July 24th, at 118 North Genesee Street here in Waukegan at 6:00. We'll be discussing some ideas of what we going, is going forward, as far as some of the issues that we're dealing with, that we can bring, and let you know the work that we've been doing here in Lake County as a whole. We just not based in Waukegan, but we figured Waukegan would be the central place because everything happens here in Waukegan, you know? So if you could come, that address is 118 Genesee Street. That would be next Monday, the 24th, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Margaret Carrasco, tonight, I would like to extend a personal invitation to the entire community to attend and to participate in this year's Fiesta de Patrias 2017 Parade Celebration, a tradition that's been at least for 20 years here in Waukegan. Except for one thing, I assure you, we will make history. It will start on time. Right, Fire Department? Okay? This year's objective is twofold. We want to take it to a different level. We want it to be the best parade in the whole Chicagoland area. Our objective would be twofold. First, to be inclusive of everyone in every aspect, because this is Waukegan. All races, all different kind of nationalities, all colors, a diverse display of art, music, celebrity guests, advertising, sports. Not everyone plays soccer. Wouldn't it be cool if we had some professional Chicago Bears players, or Cogs, or White Sox to come down, do some autographs for the kids, okay? And of course, we can't forget about the food. This year, it would be a taste of Waukegan. It would not be 20 vendors of just Mexican food, but rather a whole diverse type, every kind of food you can think of, okay? You can start from one and go down to the end. We also have a long list of top musical groups, dignitaries, entertainers coming directly from Mexico. Number two, objective, we want this event to showcase Waukegan. And how we're gonna go about it is with our commercial and advertising. We're gonna take local residents, all colors, ages, races, and they're gonna do the commercials for us at different sites in Waukegan that we want the rest of the world to know about. I assure you, Waukegan will rock that day. The event will be streaming live on television, Chicagoland Television and cable, and it will not only be seen in Waukegan, Chicagoland area, Illinois, but in four other states in the United States, and also in Mexico. So save the date, Sunday, September 17th. The route this year will kick off at Abbott Middle School and, and right here at City Hall. There is a limit of 100 participants. I already got 50. So if you're gonna participate, let me know. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. Margaret, what time will that start?
Um, what time do you want it to start?
No, no.
We were gonna start 1:00, then she started 12?
1:00.
Okay.
Ralph Peterson.
1:00.
September 17th was the date, everyone. September 17th. 1:00 p.m.
Hello, everyone. Mayor Cunningham, I stand to challenge your relationship with the Waukegan Police Department. It's strange that when Mayor Motley was mayor, you and the NAACP couldn't say enough bad things about the Waukegan Police Department. Based upon the information I have gathered and been provided by residents, clergy, and ex-employees, I am here today to agree with you for once. There are problems within the police force, problems that you as a black mayor ought to, ought to address. You complained for 18 years about the good old boys, and now as mayor, you have for some reason embraced it. It's 2017, and we don't have not one African-American-appointed police official. We have never had a female-appointed police official. That frat house mentality makes it impossible for African-Americans, women, gays, and lesbians to work in advance through the, through the ranks. According to some of our Neighborhood Watch groups, we seem to have forced all our gay women into neighborhood police roles. Meanwhile, I keep hearing about this immature chauvinist Lieutenant Beech, who is looked upon as cancerous to the force and unwanted by the diverse Neighborhood Watch groups. Chief Walls, me personally, I think you're a good guy, but what does that do for the residents or the diverse officers if you don't turn this force around? If either of you guys do not have the courage to take actions, I am concerned clergy, residents, we'll invite the DOJ, EEOC, and anyone else here in order to force you to do what is right slash your job. I know, Mayor, this is a hard thing for you to do because you're trying to award all the officers who supported you when you were running, as for instance. You've You've given Granger all the liquor on the lakefront. You placed Lieutenant Beach's group down there as his personal security. You are looking past the women on the force to promote this goosman, a man who ironically was demoted for beating women. Now that the budget has passed, and this is very important, now that the budget has passed, show us that you have integrity by resolving this toying matter that the community have asked you to address for the last two months, we're waiting slash paying attention. You parade around the city telling everyone that you are the city's first black mayor, but what have you done of significance for blacks and women? Truth is, sir, you have done nothing for women or minorities in this city. Personally, I feel it was just an easy thing for you to use while a white man was in office. Mayor, we intend to make this scandalous toying matter heard every meeting. Thank you.
That concludes the audience time. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I saw Daniella come in, and she had signed up to speak. She's one of our younger residents. Can we allow her to speak? She missed her time.
Come on, Daniella. Are you, Daniella? Oh, yeah, come on. Is your brother with you? All right. They're always together, is the reason I ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm kind of nervous now. This is like unexpected. I thought I wasn't going to go up because like I came late.
Don't worry about it. Just be you. Just be you. You're okay.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and City Council members. My name is Daniella Lopez, and I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and a rising junior at Waukegan High School. I'm not, it's not every day that I plan to spend the night of my summer vacation at a city council meeting, but I am excited about tonight's meeting. As you know, I've been up here like, I've been here like two times, and I'm excited to have my voice heard and participate and democracy and represent Clean Power Lake County. To be honest, though, I've left down, I was left down a lot of times when my words and the words of my fellow Waukegan Knights are not listened to or not followed up by action from you all. Fortunately, this is not the case tonight. The last time I spoke here was a couple of months ago, and I said that I envision a city that is committed to 100% renewable energy, a true green town with an amazing lakefront for tourists and residents to enjoy. I'm proud to be back here again, speaking to you all moments before the council votes on Mayor Cunningham's decision to commit to the city of Waukegan to the Paris Agreement and the Compact of Mayors. Thank you, Mayor Cunningham, for sticking to your promise of being the best salesman for Waukegan. Joining a compact of mayors is a great first action to make our city a leader, is combating climate change, and making Waukegan a healthier, cleaner, and economically competitive northshore city. It's this kind of leadership that encourages my friends and I to look forward to building our great city. Let's work together, our city, our city council, the mayor, Clean Power Lake County, and engaging our communities and changing the perception of Waukegan from a rust-belt town stuck in the past to a visionary community leading Lake County to a clean energy future. Thank you.
All right, Resolutions, Proclamations, Presentations, Appointments. I'm going to go ahead and read the Item A, Heart of the City. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 3, 2017. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Now, Item Four. Heart of the City Presentation. Unfortunately, they're not here, correct? They're not here? But what we're going to do, I'm going to read what we have for them, and then we'll make sure it gets delivered to them. The city of Waukegan does hereby present Heart of the City. This leadership award for outstanding achievement, for academics, excellence, and service to our community on and off the soccer field, presented on July 17, 2017. We will have this delivered to them this week. Thank you to them, and hopefully they will come so you can see these young men and young ladies, what they're doing on and off the soccer field. Motion to approve resolution authorized in 2017 Northern Illinois Air Show. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor. Are there any questions to the, to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve a resolution committed to city of Waukegan to adopt, honor, and uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goals and authorize the mayor to commit the city to, to the compact of mayors. Obviously, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. All right, all right now. Now, when the work, when the work comes for that, I want those same claps now. Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met this evening. We have three items on the agenda. Item A, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to award the 2017 Manhole and Catch Basin Frames and Grates bid for an amount not to exceed $27,938, and that is coming from line item Budget Code 555-913-025468, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to award the 2017 Annual Commodities Bid for an Amount Not to Exceed $121,250, and this is charged to Budget Code 100911025468 and/or 555-915425468, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to waive the bid procedure and allow the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance Department to continue its current vehicle parts purchasing product practices. And we had a list of nine vendors that the Public Works Department uses, and what they'll do is when there are parts needed for vehicles or maintenance, they'll get the three, they'll contact at least three vendors and get the lowest pricing for that day when they need the parts. And I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
That is it for Public Works.
Motion's passed and carried. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. We met this evening, and the first item, the committee voted to authorize a contribution of $25,000 for the 2017/18 fiscal year to Waukegan Main Street, and the funding is from line item 100-103024639. In 2002, the city of Waukegan was designated an Illinois Main Street community. Waukegan Main Street implements the Main Street approach, and as a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization, Waukegan Main Street receives support from all sectors of the community, residents, small businesses, owners, property owners, developers, the city of Waukegan, and other entities such as the Park District, Port District, and the Public Library. These partnerships have helped Waukegan Main Street to lead the way toward a more vibrant downtown that is drawing people and activities back to its core. Waukegan Main Street is requesting $25,000 contribution for the city for the current fiscal year, and mayor, the rest of the council that was not on the committee, and citizens, this is something that we do every year, this is a reoccurring donation of $25,000, and mayor, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried.
Item B was held over committee, sir. Item C, the committee voted to provide for the issuance of not-to-exceed $8 million in general obligation refunding bond Series 2017A, and not-to-exceed $9 million taxable general obligation refunding bonds Series 2017B of the city of Waukegan Lake County, Illinois, and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and the interest on the said bonds. The city has an opportunity to refinance two bond issues. One issued in 2009 for working cash, and the other issued in 2010 for capital projects. The ordinance presented here tonight will give authority to the city officials to enter the markets to refinance the bonds for net present value savings of 2% or greater. Again, for those of you that weren't on the committee, for the audience, refinancing of one of the series of bonds will save the city about $170,000, and for the other refinancing of the bonds that's for a longer term is going to save the city about $330,000. There's no added time on the bonds. All we're doing is refinancing the bonds. There's no added penalties, there's no added taxes. It's to the city's benefit to do this, and mayor, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you. Labor Relation, Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, sure, you got it. Item A, motion to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 16-0-18, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the city of Waukegan, Illinois, effective May 1, 2017, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman May. Roll call, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item B, motion adopting a resolution to formally create a travel policy for elected officials and city staff, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Valco. Questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
And Item C, motion to adopt the resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been passed and carried. Item Eight, Reports and Communications. Motion to accept and place unfilled treasures month reports for the month of June 2017.
Here, I just want to let you know that that's filed with the clerk's office. Anyone who wants a copy can go either to my office or to the clerk's office.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion's passed and... New Business. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve vendor payments dated July 17, 2017, in a total amount of $1,278,856.89. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May, to approve regular payroll dated July 7, 2017, in total amount of $1,503,949.49. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve elected official stipend expenses account payroll dated July 7, 2017, in amount of $6,141.66. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Who made the motion?
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May, to approve final check payroll dated July 7, 2017, in total amount of $22,836.21. Questions to the motion? Roll call, please. Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome, motion to approve the use of the Steinheim Pavilion for Craft Beer Festival on Saturday, September 2, 2017, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. This event is sponsored by Waukegan Main Street. The sponsor has applied under directive for non-city government use of non-owned buildings and venues. This event has been approved by the Outdoor Special Events Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve the use of Washington Street East of Butrick and West of Martin Luther King Jr. and Martin Luther King Jr. North of Washington to Clayton Street on Sunday, September 17, 2017, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, for the Fiesta Patrias... Patris. All right, I'm going to get it. 2017 Parade. This event is sponsored by Margaret Carrasco of Fiesta Patris 2017. The event has been approved by the Outdoor Special Events Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor. Aye.
Item G, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Seeger, approve the use of Steinheim Pavilion for Tri-State Soulful Sounds on Friday, August 25, 2017, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This event is sponsored by Tanisha Howard. The sponsor has applied under directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and... has applied under directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. This event has been approved by Outdoor Special Events Board. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve all raffle sales and applications. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion by... Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve all block properties. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Ordinances. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Mozzio, to approve an ordinance adding handicap parking on Victory Street on 8th Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, I was gonna make a motion to put Alderman's time before executive session. Is that our right? Do we want to do that or no?
Mayor, we'll get all... Everybody's in the order says yes. All right, we'll do that. Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Villalobos, to do Alderman's time as number 11 versus number 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The reason we're doing it, everyone, we're going into executive session, and it's gonna be pretty lengthy, unless you want to stay for afterwards. Nobody, everybody shaking their head now. All right. All right. All right. Alderman's time.
Alderman Seager.
No comment.
Alderman Mozzio.
Just a couple of things. With all the activity we have on the beach and much foot traffic as we get down like, I've always thrown out the idea, I've talked to Alderman May about it a lot, and Mayor, I don't know if we can make it hap... We're not gonna make it happen this year, obviously, but we need to think for next year. Get the city to invest or find an investor or a sponsor to buy, I don't know what the number is, 5, 10 storage containers, and let people rent out the storage containers for a very little fee, whatever it is. Have Corporation Council figure out the logistics of it, run some electricity to it, and if people want to sell water, or kites, or swimsuits, or trinkets, I mean, whatever they want to sell, buy, I mean, whatever, but it gives them a little bit more opportunity down there, a little entrepreneurship for some people if they want to do it. Don't make the cost, obviously. The good thing about a storage container is you can't vandalize the damn thing. I mean, they got... A hurricane can't knock it out. Get it down there, park them down there, run some electricity to it. If people want to, you know, decorate it with whatever they want, figure it out, let them have at it. I think it's just a way to bring more, you know, things down to the beach, because right now, if you go down there, you gotta, you gotta find a sherpa or a donkey to bring everything you want down there, you know? You gotta schlepp everything down there and go back to the car, and ask your 14-year-old daughter, and get your eyes rolled, that, you know, all that type of stuff. So I'd like to, I'd like to see if we couldn't do that and set up something where people could do it. I don't think it's that hard to do, and storage containers are not expensive, from what I looked up, and that the expense wouldn't be that much. So I'd like to put that on the docket and put that in people's brain for next year, and see if we can't do that.
Yes, sir.
And thank...
Thank you.
Have it once in a while.
Thank you, Alderman Mozzio.
One more thing, a more somber note, is I think any Alderman up here that has had to go to somebody's house to see their basement flooded, it's very... That's a difficult thing to do. I've had to do it far too often as an Alderman, not just in this storm, but in other storms. When you get that call and they say, "Greg, I got coming up," you know, it's just, it's just heartbreak. It's, it's so heartbreaking, at least it is to me, and I'm sure I can speak for most of the Aldermen up here, to have to go to a resident's house because their basement's flooded, because you are helpless. When that water comes, there's nothing you can do, and it sometimes comes unexpectedly. Some of these poor people, though, it's happened before. I've asked our city engineer, I have one section over on Leith that, for whatever reason, it just gets hit hard. I'm sure all the Aldermen can tell stories of certain spots in their ward that get hit, but I just, I just want to say that my heart goes out to you. I've had water in two of my homes that I've lived in, very small, but nothing, like, nothing that was, you know, earth-shattering by any means, but my heart just goes out to these people, because you lose everything, and these poor people west of us, my goodness. I mean, you're losing everything. I just wanted to say my, my heart goes out to those people. That's it.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, so I just kind of want to piggyback a little bit on sentiments of Alderman Mozzio over here, and I think it's a great job and way to be proactive with getting the Red Cross to help out residents here. I actually wasn't aware of that until tonight, so Mayor, thank you for doing that and making sure that residents have outlets. It's a start, right? It's not gonna fix everything, but it's definitely a start in the right direction to give some residents relief from this. Also, I was talking with our interim director for Public Works about tracking all the calls that came in from the residents about the storm, so we can identify more accurately where our water issuers are at, and I'd like to see that coupled when we do our assessments, to make sure that shows where our prioritization's at in terms of our sewer and drainage. So I think it's a great way to couple these things together, right, so we can be, again, more prepared. Number two, I'd like to say I'm super excited again to see that there's more festivals on our lakefront. Many people have talked for many years about bringing more and more to our lakefront, so this year, you know, just someone's like, "Let's do it," and sometimes it just ends up being that simple. Someone wants to put the time and effort into doing it. I get the lucky thing to just say yes or no about it. So for me, it's super simple. For people that do logistics and plan out events, I know how tough that really is, actually, but it's so great to see more of this, so I'm excited. This is actually a good problem to have, to figure out what we need to be doing to make it better and improve for the festivals and the beachgoers, so I look forward to helping out with that where I can. And last but not least, I want to say thank you again to Mayor for signing on. I look forward to helping out with as much of the Compact of Mayors and the Paris Agreements. Like, obviously, I've been here for the past, since I've been sitting in this chair, speaking about our environment and the climate of Waukegan, so for us as a community to move forward is, it's a big deal to me. Again, I'll reiterate, I'm more than happy to help out as much as I possibly can for this, and even if I can't help out, I'll still do it anyways. This is what I believe in, all right? This is what I believe in for Waukegan, that makes us a better place, that's gonna make us a better place to live at and move our community forward. This is a big piece to me, in my mind, about our future and our vision of what this community looks like, so thank you again for going forward with this, Mayor. Again, I'm more than happy to do as much as I can to help, and then some, and all those wonderful people out there from Clean Power Lake County, thank you for being here today, showing your port, showing that this is meaningful, not just to a couple of people, but a good mor... a good amount of people here. Again, Clean Power Lake County has represented this room greatly. Would you all please stand up and just kind of show, again, the support that we have here. These are all Clean Power Lake County supporters here, all right? These are our residents. These are Waukeganites, and these are Lake County residents, all right? We fill a house. All right? So thank you again, everyone, for coming out today. Thank you for your time. Thank you again, Mayor. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. Well, with the water, I guess I can say my ward was hit pretty hard. Fifth Ward residents, and I want to thank the Public Works Department, Mike Hewitt and his staff. I had three streets, New York, Judge, Lorraine, that were flooded to capacity. You couldn't even pass. One collapsed wall from the basement, water six feet high. Couple residents. I can't say enough about how Public Works came out. Fire chief, your staff was there, helping out. We had to have gas turned off, electricity turned off on three streets. Ninety residents were... Ninety houses were affected by that. Kudos to the gas company, whoever was in charge of, on Friday, getting back out to go door-to-door and make sure that gas was able to, and free to be turned back on. So whoever was in charge of that, I'd like to thank the gas department, police department. While I'm going over on the different streets, there was a gentleman that is known to have some mental issues. I was going over on Judge, and he comes out with a rifle, and I... And I just stopped in my tracks, and I had my phone in my hand, and I'm getting ready to call 911, and here comes a police officer. Someone must have called, so I got to his window, and he was already looking, you know, and he was able to get the rifle from the guy. So they were Johnny on the spot. So I appreciate everyone that came out to help. Those were some trying times, and also Public Works with the quick starting to clean up, even as quickly as Thursday morning, Friday morning, getting that cleaned up, and anyone that has debris or items that were messed up in the flood, you can put them out on your parkway, and the city is working hard to get that picked up for you. And on Friday, they'll do another assessment to find out if we need to continue it next week. So kudos to the city of Waukegan, police, fire, Public Works, the mayor for coming out, and every resident. I had some residents over on New York that were helping other people. Their basement were flooded, but they was helping other people that couldn't get out from around their houses, the front and back. They was just like they were on an island by themselves. So kudos to all those residents over, which they call Frog Island. Yeah, they, they came through for each other, so that says a lot about Waukegan. So thanks again, police, fire, Public Works, for your awesome job. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to an article that was in Newsom, "Two rescued in both sink near Waukegan Harbor." The Coast Guard and, of course, our Fire Department were able to rescue some gentleman just south of Waukegan Harbor, and our Fire Department is right there to assist, and thank goodness we have a Coast Guard and a Fire Department, and we do have, takes care of emergency situations like this. It was in the article, it was in the Newsom. Coast Guard pulls men from water unharmed after response to a call. I'm in the water about 45 minutes. So congratulations to the Coast Guard and our Fire Department. That's about it, Your Honor.
All right.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I also just want to thank everyone in the city for coming together on the flood. I think a lot of us Aldermen go to our hotspots when something like that happens, and when I went to my hotspot, which was an apartment complex in the Seventh Ward, I came upon the mayor, and so kudos to the mayor. He put on a raincoat, and he was out there investigating the damage throughout our city. He spent a good part of his day talking to residents and reviewing the damages across our city, so good for you, Mayor, for getting out of your office and getting on the streets and actually witnessing what was happening. And it all leads into the mayor's plan for infrastructure planning, and it doesn't happen overnight. We know it's gonna take some time, but he was out there actually witnessing, and it's different. Getting a phone call is a lot different than actually going out there and seeing it, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
The Compact of Mayors, so congratulations to the city council, congratulations to Clean Power Lake County, and to Waukegan, but let's not wait for three years for action. We need to act swiftly to capitalize on the Future Energy Jobs Act with procurement events starting in 2018. I also would like to encourage a public process that includes community outreach. We have to ensure that the plan benefits those mostly impacted by climate change, through air pollution reduction, savings on electric bills through energy efficiencies, and greater access to clean public transportation, and finally, access to clean energy jobs. Taking action to reduce carbon emissions is right in line with our mayor's vision for the lakefront. It's time for Waukegan to become a true city of progress and a true green town as a leader in clean energy innovation, creating jobs, and it's time to turn the page on our legacy of pollution. So kudos to Waukegan, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't want to be left out. I'm gonna throw my two cents in. Mike Hewitt, is he still here? Thank the men and women of the Public Works Department for all that they've done. It really is, everybody came together on this, and it really is a wonder what you guys have done this week since Wednesday. That's all I have, sir.
Alderman Taylor.
I just want to also say that my ward was actually hit pretty hard with the water. I want to encourage them to go to the LakeCountyIllinois.gov website and start filling out the emergency damage assessment forms. Also, to remind people that you can throw out your damaged materials. It does not include building materials, and please be respectful. Do not use this as a spring cleanup. It is just for water damaged materials. Please respect that. Lastly, I want to ask for people to use patience and understanding during this time. As most of you know, a lot of our east-west roads through the county have been affected. In my ward in particular, Oak Plain and River Road have been horrendous as far as traffic cutting through. Residents are upset. Please don't speed through these areas. They are residential areas. Respect that, but also, for the residents, please understand, things will get better as these east-west roads open. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Motion, I need a motion to go in. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Newsome, to go into closed session. I don't want to see what it's for. Do I read it? To hold close to the purpose of discussing personal matters pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2-1, discussion of sale or lease of city-owned property pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, discussing pending litigation pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2, or discussion collective bargaining pursuant to 5 ILCS-120. All those in favor? On five minutes, we all go in the back and...
Mayor, can we get a self-report going up with you and the Aldermen?
Oh, I... Sure. You guys want to? Yes, we can do that. Go... Yeah. All right. Right here, right here. You want to go out front? All right, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mozzio.
Well, I'm not Taylor.
Villalobos, Villalobos to go on to... Regular session. With no action taken.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Taylor.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Mozzio, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Have a nice summer. I mean, nice week, month.